The opinions of any callers, guests, or the host of the SMF Voice are not to be taken as factual information. The SMF Voice urges all participants of the show to research and fact find on their own in order to draw their own conclusions about any topic talked about pertaining to any and all content presented in the broadcast chat or any other form of participation on the SMF Voice. Well, hello everybody and welcome to the Stow Monroe Falls Voice. I am speaking with you today on the morning following the big general election that just happened. I can say that I'm still kind of floored and my head is spinning and we haven't even counted all the votes and seen all the states come up with their final tallies. And it really looks like this is going to be a landslide election for not only Donald Trump. The Republicans have a firm grasp on the House as of this one, not as of this morning, they just, or not on the House, on the Senate this morning. So they have control of that. And then the House of Representatives looks like it could stay red. Again, all, everything isn't counted up yet. Everything isn't tallied. But at the end of the day, this looks like a major referendum against those that have been in power over the last four years. And it's not a referendum by Trump voters. It's not a referendum by Republicans or conservatives. Really, there was such a showing of liberal Democrats that came out by the millions and changed their vote to vote for not just on the national scene, but on the local scenes, vote for a lot of common sense, vote for normality. And it is a referendum by them when it's applied to what they have seen in stark contrast to the Trump administration before. This is something that we will touch on in the next couple of weeks. And I understand that it's a national issue and this is the Stow Monroe Falls. But we have seen nonstop our local areas, our elected representatives, you know, holding seats on, on the school board and city councils and in our counties and, you know, on a state level, we have seen them bring the national issues down to the local level as a way to govern. And so this election, in my opinion, is a referendum on them as well. And in kind of a warning for those that are still holding seats that I think America, both on the left and right, are starting to get fed up and sick of what they have seen over the last few years. So again, we'll touch on that. It's not what I want to touch on today. Before I get into that, define the Stow Monroe Falls Voice. Follow us on Facebook at SMF Voice. You can find us on Spotify, also SMF Voice YouTube, SMF Voice. And if you have any problems, concerns, questions, you want to be a guest on the show, or you have an idea for a guest for the show, you can contact me at smfvoice@twc.com. Today, I understand that I told you that I was supposed to have a show out yesterday with an interview or two, and I didn't get a chance to edit that down yet. Just so much going on, the regular broken record of my personal life being busy, my professional life being busy. I just have a lot going on. Plus, the election really got in the way because I have a very short attention span. So, you know, I have to pay attention to what's going on. So I apologize for that. But I wanted to put out something this week and make it relevant to our locality and what we're seeing and kind of tie it into what we saw last night with the general election. I had gone to the school board meeting on the, what was that, Monday? And it kind of, in conjunction with the school board meeting before, there seems to be a trend now. And this is also something I'm going to be touching on through the next few weeks. There seems to be this trend where there is this, this sense of boldness of not only going after one of the members on the, on the Board of Education, but also completely, for lack of a better word, dissing the public and, and, you know, what we have to say or our input. And they lie about saying that they are interested in getting together with residents and, and, you know, really being concerned about what we think. This is, this is something that needs to be touched on and you need to see it and have it. I don't think many of you need it explained to you, but I'm going to explain it to you as you watch it. And maybe that will give you an idea of just what's going on in our city. And I'm concentrating on the school board right now. And the reason for that is because of what I just mentioned. There seems to be a lot of contempt, not just for the one school board member that, that, you know, has been getting attacked rather horribly by the left in this community. But it's an attack on the general public who are like, well, hold on a second, you know, we want these questions answered and they don't get their questions answered. We want to know where to go to get this information that, you know, you say is, is so good when it, when it came to this school levy, which failed last night. It didn't fail by the margin that I wanted it to. And I think we're going to be touching on that too. But there is a lot of condemnation from at least the Board of Education when it comes to the way the general public views them. And that's concerning. And we need to start doing something about it, either for them to start changing their tune, or to start pointing out to them that the general public here in Stow, as, as evident by, you know, the school levy failing yesterday, the general public has had enough of the games and they just kind of want school business to be conducted properly. So we're going to touch on that right now. So when I was at the school board meeting on Monday, it was done, you should already know the story. This was a work session board meeting, which means that there was no public comments allowed. And really, there, there was not even supposed to be a lot of discussion as far as the board went. But it seemed that the entire board meeting on Monday was set up to go after the Stow Monroe Falls Board of Education member, Mike Sheehan. And he's been attacked, well, really since he's taken his seat a year ago, almost. And, and last, and on Monday, it just went to a whole new level because every opportunity that there was a chance that the four other board members, I would say three other board members, because I have to be honest, Antoinette Jenkins hasn't really spoken up and slammed Mike Sheehan in public that I've seen, at least over the last couple of meetings. She stayed rather quiet. And anytime I have seen her comment, which is very few and far between, it really does, the way I see it, it deals with school business, though I don't agree with the business, where she wants to go, how she votes. But I haven't seen her come after Mike verbally like I saw the other three do. So what I want to do is give you, I'm going to pick this meeting apart from Monday. And I want to give you, I want to talk through it. And I'm going to do this with some video that I want you to watch or audio, if you're listening on Spotify or whatever. And this is something that I've never done on this show with this software. So I'm praying it works. And it should, because I screwed it up the first time. But we'll get through it this time. This was a part, a section, and this was probably the least that Mike was attacked. And it's really only one line. But you'll see exactly what I'm talking about once I get to the finality of what I'm going to present to you right now. They got into a conversation about public record requests. And for some reason, I'm sure that there have been a lot more public record requests of this district than has happened in the past. And there's a good reason for that. It's because people are very concerned about what's actually happening financially, educationally, morally, you know, people are very interested now because they see a failing school district. They see a school district that just a few years ago had an A plus rating. I think we're around a C or a C plus now. We're watching a decline in, in student population when it comes to the district. We're seeing teachers coming out very slowly that are starting to express their, their concerns with what's been happening in the district. So, you know, so a lot of people are doing these public record requests to figure out what's going on. So the Board of Education, or at least the four on the board, or the three on the board, that are generally pushing these, these questionable policies, and I'll be nice by using that word. They want to talk about possibly charging for these public record requests, which they're allowed to do. And there were some good questions if they were going to charge, because when you do public record requests, it does include having district employees go out and do the research and put together the material to send back to the requester. However, I, I'm pretty sure that that's already part of the taxes that we pay the district. That should be included, I would think, because, you know, that's part of the job. Every school district has to fulfill some kind of public record requests. And I can't see a school district just saying, oh, well, we don't have a way to pay our employees through that, that, that workday to go ahead and fulfill these requests. So they're trying to come up with a way, which they, again, they can rightfully do, of maybe charging something or a way to save the district money. That's what they say, which is almost laughable, but a way to save the district money. And so I'm going to start here. And this is Board Vice President Pam Wind asking a question, and it's a good question, about, you know, how we start this process? How can we talk our way through to come to a conclusion of what we can do about the expenditures when it comes to public record requests? Here it is right now.
When we talk about the costs for public records, is there, is there a ceiling on that amount of cost in order for it to be reasonable to the requestor?
I mean, I think there already, I think there already is, like, like, we can impose charges. It's just we don't. Is that accurate?
So, a public entity can, can charge the requestor copy costs. You're not allowed to charge, and mailing costs as well. But for instance, you're not allowed to charge for, for someone's time to gather those records. As a practical matter, and Mr. Goclano can verify this, I mean, I think most of the public records requests that the board is getting now are by email. And, and that typically is the way that documents are provided.
So a discussion has been started. And I'm not so sure how accurate the attorney's answer for that is. I'm sure that it's based in some kind of reality. But it doesn't matter what I think about that. The discussion for how to compensate for a lot of these record requests that probably have increased in numbers, how to, how to deal with those in a way to, you know, be effective when it comes to the cost of getting them. Now, before I continue to the second clip, I will tell people that it is strange to me, and I'm trying to be fair here. It is strange to me that now, at this time, that they are starting to talk about charging for public record requests because of what we've seen happen in the past. So it almost seems like a way to stifle people from asking. But that's just my opinion for now. Okay. So we can touch on that down the line, too, over the next couple of shows. Let's go to the second clip as we continue to talk about how to deal with these public record requests as far as, you know, how much they could cost the district, how to save district money when it comes to it. Here's the second clip.
My other question was, in terms of costs for fulfilling public records requests, like, what are we, what are we even looking at in terms of how much that would be if we were to impose costs?
Okay, so there we have Vice President Pam Wind asking a legit question, right? And so we're continuing the conversation of public record requests, right? So here's the third clip here.
What's up for, for addition now is the labor surrounding that. So it would be hypothetically, your, if you had 50 records requests to do in one day, and you've taken three hours of your time to do it, could you charge back for the time, the taxpayer dollars that you're using to do the, the public records request as opposed to doing your job as a treasurer, or, you know, the day to day operations as a treasurer? I think that would be, you know, what's being discussed. I just don't know how practical it actually is, if, and how often you're even getting hit with large amounts of public records.
So here we have Board Member Kerry Sedolnick asking a question that was actually already answered. And these clips, by the way, are in order of how this conversation went on that night. If you listen to the first clip, which I might go over again, the attorney already said that you can't charge somebody who's looking for a record request, you can't charge them based on the, the labor that it would cost for an employee of the district to actually gather that information. At least that's what I got from it. We can watch that in a little bit. Again, but I believe that's what the attorney was getting at. And Kerry Sedolnick just basically, I guess, didn't hear what he had to say. As a matter of fact, let's go back to that first clip really quick right now and make sure we understand what that attorney was saying.
When we talk about the costs for public records, is there, is there a ceiling on that amount of cost in order for it to be reasonable to the requestor?
I mean, I think there already, I think there already is, like, like, we can impose charges. It's just we don't. Is that accurate?
Mr. Attorney?
Public entity can, can charge the requestor copy costs. You're not allowed to charge, and mailing costs as well. But for instance, you're not allowed to charge for, for someone's time to gather those records.
Okay, so you're not allowed to, to charge basically the labor, the time that it takes for a, a public employee that works for the district to gather those records. So, and again, here is Kerry Sedolnick's question following that answer.
Up for, for addition now is the labor surrounding that. So it would be hypothetically, your, if you had 50 records requests to do in one day, and you've taken three hours of your time to do it, could you charge back for the time, the taxpayer dollars that you're using to do the, the public records request as opposed to doing your job as a treasurer, or, you know, the day to day operations as a treasurer? I think that would be, you know, what's being discussed. I just don't know how practical it actually is, if.
Well, it's not that the practicality, according to the attorney, if he's correct, you're not allowed to do that lawfully. So, again, getting back to my main point here, we have a conversation about public record requests. And we've heard from two board members now that are asking questions about it and having a conversation about what they can do. Whether you agree with this conversation or not, they are doing what they're supposed to do. They're having a conversation about it. So, let's get somebody else into this. And again, this is happening in chronological order. Board Member Mike Sheehan speaks up with a possible solution to cutting costs when it comes to these public record requests. Let's listen to what he has to say. And then at the very end, I want you to pay very close attention to what one of the board members says in response. And then the other board member agrees. Pay very close attention to the end of this as well. Here it goes.
Patrick, do you ever think of the situation here as you get public records requests, making a, a record of them? So if somebody comes along and asks maybe that same thing, they wanted to look at Joe Smith's contract, and they, you can just refer them to, okay, that was a public records request on this day, just click the link, there it is, versus you having to, you know, go through that whole process again, of having some kind of, you know, just making it something simple, and then you not having to repeat your, you know, your efforts?
I don't, I don't know. I'm gonna, Mr. Hertz.
I mean, you've done the work once, why do it again?
The only thing I have to say is that that's kind of off topic here. So, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so here we have Board Member Mike Sheehan, talking about public record requests, talking about how the district might be able to save money. He's not telling anybody to do anything. He's asking the treasurer if that's something he's done, considered, or if he thinks it's a good idea. Let's listen to that again.
Patrick, do you ever think of the situation here as you get public records requests, making a, a record of them? So if somebody comes along and asks maybe that same thing, they wanted to look at Joe Smith's contract, and they, you can just refer them to, okay, that was a public records request on this day, just click the link, there it is, versus you having to, you know, go through that whole process again, of having some kind of, you know, just making it something simple, and then you not having to repeat your, you know, your efforts?
I don't, I don't know. I'm gonna, Mr. Hertz.
I mean, you've done the work once, why do it again?
The only thing I have to say is that that's kind of off topic here. So, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so let's go over what Mike Sheehan was suggesting. He was asking the treasurer, hey, would it save a lot of time and probably the district some money because the treasurer has other jobs he has to do, and so do the other people that are involved in gathering all the information for these record requests. Mike is asking the treasurer if he might have or would consider having some kind of a list of record requests he's already fulfilled, where he can easily access it by name. So if Joe Schmo were to call, or were to write in or email in that they would like a public records request on a certain employee, the treasurer can easily reference Joe Schmo and see that he has made public records requests in the past, but then see also if this was a request that was already made and sent to him already. And that way, he could simply just re, resend that public records request with a little note that said you had already asked for this, maybe you didn't see it, you know, being polite. And that would save a lot of, a lot of time when it comes to the treasurer's time, when it comes to other employees' times, in order to fulfill these requests. And it would allow them to be more effective at continuing about their other jobs. And really, it would save the district money down the line. So let's listen to that one more time. I know you're probably sick of hearing it, but listen to that one more time. Tell me if Mike Sheehan is off topic, and if the other board member, which is Kerry Sedolnick, and the president of the board, who agrees with Kerry Sedolnick at the end, you know, who's, who's off base here? You tell me. Here it is again.
Patrick, do you ever think of the situation here as you get public records requests, making a, a record of them? So if somebody comes along and asks maybe that same thing, they wanted to look at Joe Smith's contract, and they, you can just refer them to, okay, that was a public records request on this day, just click the link, there it is, versus you having to, you know, go through that whole process again, of having some kind of, you know, just making it something simple, and then you not having to repeat your, you know, your efforts?
I don't, I don't know. I'm gonna, Mr. Hertz.
I mean, you've done the work once, why do it again?
The only thing I have to say is that that's kind of off topic here. So, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, let's listen to the response of the, of the two board members again, really quick.
The only thing I have to say is that that's kind of off topic here. So, yeah, yeah.
One more time.
The only thing I have to say is that that's kind of off topic here. So, yeah, yeah.
So I can tell you that this entire board meeting from beginning to end was nothing but cheap shots on Mike Sheehan. It was nothing but, you know, when I say cheap shots, they were disguised. They had a presenter come in, talk about Robert's rules, talk about how a board is supposed to function. And it seems to me that that came at a funny time, and was, it was put into the agenda and agreed upon by people that weren't Mike Sheehan. That's just the way I saw it. I think just having that lady there was a slam. Unfortunately, the nice woman who gave that presentation really didn't, I don't think, do what the board expected them to do. And that was to almost criticize and critique Mike Sheehan's performance. Instead, I think, speaking of referendums, it was sort of a small referendum on the other four members of the board. Again, Board Member Antoinette Jenkins really hasn't spoken up in public to the point where I can put a lot of blame on her. But I can tell you that the other three board members, I think it was kind of talking to them when it came down to questions that they could have asked this presenter. They formed these questions in a way to continue to slam Mike Sheehan. And really, again, the entire board meeting, that was just a little tiny part, and probably the most polite way of slamming Mike Sheehan during that meeting. The meeting before was a complete disaster as well. But I think for the next couple of episodes, anyway, I'm going to be touching on some of those other parts of that meeting, of which this is not something that is new. This has been commonplace since Mike Sheehan has taken his seat. And, and we're going to talk about that because I think that I really don't want, want to make issues where this, we are forced to unseat people in elections because they aren't doing their job, or that they are being what people like me would say is tyrannical. It's, it's control where it doesn't seem that Mike Sheehan is, is part of, of the board, according to them. The public has been, has been basically dismissed. Teachers have been dismissed. It's been a disaster with this Board of Education. And I, I don't want to get to the point where we have to unseat people to get things done right. I kind of just want those other board members to listen and understand that what almost every step of the way since they have taken their seats has been nothing but a complete and utter disaster. And the evidence of that is the, the shape of our schools right now. The grade dropping from an A plus to a C or a C plus. The, the seeming, seeming, people just, or kids not being in the, in the district, you know, there's not a population of students, it's dropping off the map, whether because they're moving out because their parents are sick of paying the taxes here, or whether their parents are pulling them from school to go to other schools, or, or to get private instruction or whatever. There is a major problem going on. And what I just presented with Mike Sheehan is a big part of it. I can tell you that I have gotten looks of complete contempt from some of these board members. And that is 100% disgusting. They may not like me, you know, they may not agree with me, they may think I'm the devil, whatever. But when I step up to that mic to give a public comment, I am coming as a resident. I am somebody who they represent. And that's the way that works. And they will look, look at me with contempt, and then have their attack dogs smear me or smear the people that are with me on social media. And, and, and it's, it's, it's literally childish, it's destructive, and it's something that we need to talk about at length over the next few shows. So, in, in conclusion here, I apologize again that it's not the show that I promised you. I do have those interviews complete. It's just editing those shows down and presenting them properly because there's been a lot changing. So I'm, I'm hoping, I'm not going to promise. I'm hoping that next Tuesday, we'll be back on schedule with a, a new podcast released at 8:00 AM, hopefully with some guests, you know, and, and some, some good talk, some constructive talk. And I'm going to apologize really quick. I know that I bill this show as a mostly nonpartisan show. But some of the actions that we see need to be addressed. And it might, there may be people that listen to this podcast that don't watch these school board meetings on YouTube. And I would very highly recommend that anybody who's not completely, maybe just sort of engaged, please watch those board meetings. Because that is presented by the district. That is something that I cannot, that I cannot manipulate. That's literally the truth coming at you from the school district. And I'm asking you all to go and watch those meetings so you understand that I'm not coming at you with a perspective of just being, you know, a, a naysayer and, and a horrible conservative. I am trying to get the truth out there. I am trying to bring the community on board in order to do what's right. And if what's right means that the four members on the board have a change of heart and begin doing the things the right way, then I am all for that. Or if the change means to vote them out and put people in their place, which are responsible, which are doing it for not just the taxpayers dime, you know, trying to get as much bang for the buck as possible and not over asking. And then when the public has a problem with it, And then when the public has a problem with it, going after and demonizing them, I'm asking for somebody to be there that can be responsible with the taxpayer dime. But most of all, it's all about the children, which is something that during that meeting, that presenter kept saying. And it is about the children. It's not about manipulating the children. It's not about using the children as human shields. It's not about using the children as a tool. It's about educating the children of what they need to know right now in order to make their own decisions after they graduate. Keep that in mind, everybody. I appreciate the continued support of the show. Again, Facebook, SMF Voice, Spotify, SMF Voice, YouTube, SMF Voice. And to email me, smfvoice@twc.com. Can't wait to see you on the next, on the next program. And again, still working on the live shows and we will get there. Other than that, I'll talk to you next week. Have a good week.